It's summertime. I officially call the meeting to order. Mrs. Snyder?
Ms. Matoye.
Roll call? Oh, sorry. Mrs. Snyder will call roll.
Ms. Matoye.
Here.
Ms. Flora is absent. Ms. Black. Ms. Yelsey.
Here.
Ms. Anderson.
Here.
Ms. Bartow.
Here.
Ms. Snella is absent.
Dr. Navarro.
Here.
Alrighty. Do we have any community input?
No, ma'am.
Alrighty, then I am going to recess us into closed session. Welcome back, those of you that were here before. All, one of you. We are officially calling the meeting to order. Opening ceremonies will have a moment of reflection and the pledge of allegiance led by Mrs. Yelsey.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty. I need a motion for adopting the agenda. Please note, staff has pulled item 16D1, student discipline, because we don't have any tonight.
Move approval with the amendment.
Second.
Mrs. Black moved. Mrs. Yelsey seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Five ayes, two absent. It's here. Oh, I always do that wrong. I, I, one of these days I'll get this in order. We have two readouts from closed session. In closed session, the Board of Education took action to approve the salary reassignment agreement for certificated employee number 201907HR, effective July 1st, 2019. The roll call vote was as follows: five ayes, two absent. And, in closed session, the Board took action to issue a notice that a certificated employee identified by number, employee number 201908HR, shall be released effective at the end of the 2018-2019 school year from their current certificated position and reassigned to a certificated assignment within the scope of the employee's credentials, beginning in the 2019-2020 school year, and directed the superintendent or designee to send out the appropriate legal notices. The roll call vote was as follows: five ayes, two absent. No, on both of those votes, there were no nays. And now, we need the adoption of the minutes for June 11th and June 14th, 2019. Is there a motion?
Move to adopt the minutes of June 11th, 2019, and June 14th, 2019, as submitted.
Second.
It was moved by Mrs. Black, seconded by Mrs. Yelsey. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Five ayes, no nays, two absent. And we now have recognition. Dr. Barmeister.
President Matoye, members of the Board, Dr. Navarro, Cabinet, and distinguished guests. Each year, the Board of Education recognizes current students in the Newport Mesa Unified School District who have attained the level of Eagle Scout. These students have contributed many hours of community service and completed valuable projects to benefit their communities. Eagle Scout is the highest achievement or rank attainable in the Boy Scouting Program of the Boy Scouts of America. This designation, Eagle Scout, has a long history, since its founding over 100 years ago. Only 4% of Boy Scouts are granted this rank after a lengthy review process. The requirements necessary to achieve this rank take years to fulfill. Since its founding, the Eagle Scout rank has been earned by more than 2 million young men. I am pleased to introduce the Newport Mesa Eagle Scouts for 2019. We had 17 attain that rank in Newport Mesa, which I think is a really big number. Eight are here tonight. I know that some have already gone off for summer vacation, but we have eight young men to recognize as Eagle Scouts tonight. The first being Ryan Barth.
They're gonna take pictures.
Colin Chill. Daniel Clark. Matthew Imers. Christopher Forcher.
Forché.
Scott McClellan.
You know what's coming.
Landon Circe. And Evan Wu.
Dr. Barmeister, before, because I can't see you. Dr. Doughty would like to have a moment at the podium, since he is an Eagle Scout and the Board agreed that he could speak now?
Absolutely.
So, good evening, Eagle Scouts. And for the young ladies who couldn't be here tonight, the Gold Award recipients, I'm Brett Doughty. I'm an Eagle Scout from Troop 4 in Big Stone Gap, Virginia, and this is the 30th anniversary of my eagle in 1989. So, congratulations. All of you have done something that very few teens are able to do. And I just want to remind you that the Scout Oath and the Girl Scout Promise have three main points. So, there is serving something larger than yourself, your God and your faith and our country, serving other people around you, and then serving yourself by living the Scout Law and making yourself to be a better person. So, I challenge you to live these ideas, ideals throughout your adult life. Find ways to give back to the Newport Mesa community. So, whether you're going into college or when you come back for business, find a way to give back in some small way. So, in the audience, if there are any Eagle Scouts or Gold Award recipients, if you could just stand for a second, I'm not sure if we have any today, and we've got a few in our office that we've worked with. So, congratulations. And everyone else, everyone else in the room who has worked with an Eagle or Gold recipient, helping in some small way, or you've got a good family friend, or you're the parent, or uncle, or niece, or nephew is an Eagle or Gold, if you could just stand for a second. If you're related to an Eagle, Gold Award member, if you've worked with them, and just realize the impact that all of you as Eagle Scouts and Gold Awards have had, all these people around you, think of the impact in the way that you've touched their lives and you've made things better in just a small way. And so, all of you inspire us to be better educators, and you inspire the best to come out of your community, so we look forward to you continuing with that. I also would like to ask the public to support scouting. So, the Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts help shape the lives of millions of young people. Find ways to teach a skill, maybe give a small meeting place, maybe be a troop leader if you've got a little extra time, or maybe you can make a small financial contribution. If you have questions how to get involved, I know Mrs. Flora is extremely active with the Girl Scouts on a, on a large level here in Newport Mesa. Dr. Navarro is the father of two Eagle Scouts and has been active in scouting in his home area. I'm very active in scouting in Fountain Valley Huntington Beach District where I live. I know Mr. O'Rourke here is very active in scouting here in the Newport Mesa community as one of our leaders. So, if you're interested in getting involved, find a way to get involved. There's a lot of information on the Scouts websites. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And now, moms and dads, first of all, I want to thank you very much, but feel free to get up out of your seat and go to where you can get a decent picture. That's nice to say, Les.
Alright. Take pictures.
Oh, that would be wonderful. Gentlemen, thank you for what you've done. A lot of you have worked on projects that helped our, our school district and have definitely helped your community, and we are very proud of you. Thank you. It's good stuff. That's good stuff. Alrighty. Dr. Navarro, you have our next recognition.
Oh, yes. Wonderful. Alrighty, well, I tell you. Mrs. Derudy, would you mind coming up to the podium? Mrs. Derudy? Who you mind coming up? And as she's making her way up, I just want to tell you what, what a, what a gift it is to the community to have Mr. Derudy run the, the Spirit Run. I don't know where she gets the time and is able to, you know, complete her duties as an attorney, but really contributes so much to our school and our community with the Spirit Run. It's one of the best run events that are, that is in our community and all of our schools benefit. And most of all, our kids get to, those who have never run, it's their first time ever bringing an organized event, so, Mrs. Derudy?
Well, thank you. I didn't recognize, recognition, I was just, anyway, but thank you for that. I have with me here tonight, which I usually don't, my two children. We-
Who look just like they did at Eastbluff.
Yes.
Especially Matt.
So, I was gonna say, usually, I always appreciate the invitation to come, but usually I feel a little shy about coming, mostly because I, for me, it's usually never enough, even though I get all the kind words from you guys. It doesn't matter how much money, it doesn't matter. But I, this time, I feel something extra special. Maybe it's the nostalgia of my kids. I think back to the roots of it when I went and I met Ms. Matoye back in, it was 2005, and my son was in third grade and Kayla was in pre-K, and I said, you know, I really want to do a running program. And I said, I will do the Spirit Run if you let me do this running program, not that I was against the Spirit Run. I'd said, you know, I'll do that and I'll do my best, but I mostly just want to do the running. Well, here we are. So, it became just everything for me. But what I wanted to say, most importantly, is it's not just about the Spirit Run, it's about the Summer Musical, it's about, you know, the sixth grade play, it's about, these are the things that I know in my kid's life, Astro Camp, all these things. They're so important to the kids growing up. You know, I finally today, and I'll probably be upset next year, because I'm always looking for more, there is something about the kids growing up and having these experiences. So, like I was saying, my son now, he just graduated from college.
Ah.
Okay. And my daughter just graduated from high school.
Yay.
And, you know, I think about the fact that, you know, many of you there loyally, but, you know, I have to point out, in particular this year, Ms. Yelsey was there with her son and her grandson. Okay? Her son used to participate when she, you know, all the time, and she was the chair.
They flew in from Chicago.
I know.
Four that weekend.
I think about, you know, even since we expanded to the district, there's a family, the Ocampo family, and they're from Pomona. And since we started, one of the little boys, he would come and run and win, and Wendy, when she went to one of the schools that wasn't participating, she'd go to the district office, I want to go, how do I get my entry? Now, there's a little four-year-old that won this year, so we have that. And then, one other final thought is that I was at Eastbluff because we have the new tradition now, where the graduating seniors get to go to their campuses. And so, afterwards, the parents were together, and one of the sets of parents I've known from years came up and said, we've been meaning to talk to you. Ian just graduated, and he gave a speech at the, he's a runner, he's going to run for Carnegie Mellon, and he gave the whole credit to running with fast feet and the Spirit Run. So, you know, I'm gonna keep trying as hard as I can, but like I said again, this is the Spirit Run, of course, that's my thing, but there's so many things in the district that are so many traditions that we have to try to continue to hold on, and because it's not just about the money, it's about shaping little kids' lives. You never know which one, but somebody's benefiting from it. So, I appreciate the opportunity to do this. As a runner, this is my passion, so thank you so much. And I should say, I don't know if I said, we're giving about $20,000 total. Some of it is to the school, some of it is to the teams. We have invited some other schools outside the district, they don't get as much as the district, but they're getting a little bit. So, anyway, so thank you very much.
No.
We appreciate you.
Thank you. Mrs. Yelsey.
Yeah, I, I also want to thank Diane, and I think everyone can see the passion she has for this. And I, I was involved with the Spirit Run before I, when I just moved here, just as a runner, and then when I was in school, she said I was director, and so, it was very, it was important to me. And when the Spirit Run was going to be ended, because schools found that they had easier and, easier ways to raise more money, they, they wanted to stop doing it. And I remember talking to Diane, and she says, I really want to, I want to take ownership of this, I want to do it. And it was not that easy.
No.
It was convincing a lot of people, but I really felt it was important to keep the Spirit Run name, because it is such a community event. It's not just about elite runners or big runners, it was bringing kids in. And she expanded it beyond just the Cronodel Mar zone, to bring in kids from the other side of the bay, would bus them in, give them scholarships.
Not only that, she started up running clubs at those schools, so that the kids could run.
Yeah. And, and so, the fact, you know, when I met with her a few weeks ago, and she goes, I really, you know, I wish we had more money to give you, and I said, don't feel like that. You do so much more than just the money, and you really do. It's, it's bringing the community together, and $20,000 is nothing to sneeze at either. So, we, we definitely appreciate it, and I hope, even though you have no children around anymore, you will continue on this mission, because it really is a great event.
And just remember, that student didn't say, oh, and we raised this much money that year for my school. He said it was because of running and fast feet and Spirit Run. And each, each student that has a story like that is something that we're cognizant of that we don't want to let go of, so, I thank you. And there's gonna be pictures, so don't run away. So, thank you very much.
Yeah, I think, Annette wants to take your picture.
Hold on a second. I'm moving over, so if there's background, I can be in it. Total vanity. See, it won't be, it'll just be them in the sign, but that's okay. I got to move. Ha ha.
Thank you.
Thank you. Takes a lot for me to go out and run. You love running.
I love walking, and I can walk.
Alrighty. Now, reports. Mr. Holcomb.
So, you'll recall that each year, we receive a report from the Citizens Oversight Committee, who is charged with reporting to you on the expenditures of the Measure F bond funds. And tonight, we have its chairperson, Mr. Rutledge, available here to give you a report.
Good evening. That's a tough act to follow.
Where's our check? No, no.
So, I'm here tonight representing the Citizens Oversight Committee, which has existed in one form or another since Measure F was passed. Greetings to the returning Board members, greetings to the new Board members, and send my regards, please, to the missing Board members.
Absolutely.
Same thing to the financial side of the administration and the educational side of the administration. So, as a bit of a background, somewhat directed toward the new Board members, in 2000, California passed Proposition 39, which amended the state constitution, which, on one hand, eased the voting requirements to pass a bond measure, and on the other hand, increased the governance of the community on bond measures that had been passed. So, what we do is we apply the law from Proposition 39 on the particular Measure F bond. This school district, at the time, was able to raise $282 million that served a variety of projects, ranging from Newport Harbor through most of the other zones. I didn't bring a list of all those with me, but those funds had been all extended, and through the fantastic administrative side, they were able to refinance that and bring in even more funds. The calendar that we operate on is fiscal, but we're elected to calendar-based terms. I have copies of this presentation for the handout. So, our specific duties are to ensure the expenditures are consistent with a voter-approved authorization, to ensure that the district is in compliance with the state constitution, and specifically to do a financial review and a performance review of how the funds are spent, and then, on a quarterly basis, meet and ensure that projects are being planned and scheduled and budgeted properly, and to represent the interests of the community. So, I'm here tonight representing my colleagues. Last year, my colleague Mitch Vance presented to the group. There's parents from Mariners, there's members who represent the senior citizens community, there's members at large. I represent the schools-connected organizations community. I have two graduates of Estancia, one current active member of Estancia. My wife's been a longtime PTA president, I've been a longtime PTA member and booster president. Susan Gauntlet, who I think many of you know, is also on the committee. And this year, we brought the committee up to this full size of seven by adding a member of the long-term community family, the Arsenis, Laura Marquin, who's also an Estancia Zone parent, representing the business community. So, we are a seven-person commission. When the excitement in the community existed after passing a $282 million bond measure, I believe the original membership was 33 people. Once the money started being spent and the projects started being opened, it was very difficult to keep a quorum going. So, I believe the school board several years ago reconstituted this appropriately as a smaller organization, and with seven people, you only need a four-person quorum. On behalf of the committee, I'd like to thank the administration. We get fantastic support from the leadership, both Tim and Jeff are at every meeting, and we get fantastic support from the administrators who support them, both Lori and Peggy. And that's during the meetings, and that's between the meetings. So, thank you for your support. As a summary status, the district auditors take a look at all these transactions, and my background is not audit, but Julio, who's on the committees, is, and the key words in those type of audits are no disagreements, inconformity, and the funds were spent for the intended purpose, so we have a perfectly clean audit. We were somewhat between projects and funding. The Board did a good job approving spending every last dollar of the original bond measure, so we started the year with $3.8 million. Okay? So, we'd spent all the money. Fortunately, Jeff and Tim refinanced our debt and brought in $28 million additional dollars to be spent, and having that type of money in the bank gave us income of $310,000 in interest. So, you know, and we had all of $4,000 in expenses, which is some of these professional services to do these projects. So, very quiet year. But, you know, again, I applaud the work that the Board did, and I really applaud the work the administration did to raise that $28 million, because I'm an Estancia Zone parent, and we're looking forward to having a beautiful theater wherever it goes, on top of a beautiful pool, on top of a beautiful field, on top of a bunch of beautiful projects. And again, I'd like to thank the Board for that type of work. We are reviewing the plans for these projects. I know you've approved the architect, fantastic architect, not the typical architect we would hire to do a schools project, so we're all excited about that. So, in summary, your Citizens Oversight Committee is functioning as it's intended. We had complete quorums at every meeting, so quarterly meetings, complete quorums. We have a clean performance and a financial audit. Most importantly, we now have $28.3 million additional funding. Hopefully, we won't spend that all in the theater, so you'll have the opportunity to spend some more in the future. And as any public organization, our meeting minutes are taken by the group, just like Sherri takes great minutes for this group. Thank you very much. I actually read them off the website, I'm one of those people that knows how. And our information's all published on the website as well. So, thank you very much. And one of our colleagues will be doing the same next year, and hopefully talking about how we're spending that money on that theater. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Rutledge, thanks for coming out tonight. I know it's summertime, but we really appreciate you coming out. Thank you for that.
There's people in our community who get involved, and I'm one of them, the previous speaker was one of them, and all of you folks are them, and it makes a better community.
Thank you.
Wow. Thank you very much. Yay.
Mrs. Matoye, if I could, I just want, I just want to repeat for you all, as Board members, the, the statement that I've made to the committee, I believe, every single time they've met, which is my exceptional amount of gratitude for them coming to these meetings. We haven't had a whole lot to report on. It takes people who are very committed to their communities to take the time to come, to deal with all of the rules of the Brown Act, and, and all of the reporting and everything else that they do. And you all have appointed some wonderful community members to this committee, and Mr. Rutledge is an example of the rest of the membership in their commitment. It's just been a tremendous pleasure to work with this group of folks.
Amen. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, thank you so much. Please extend our thanks to the committee members that were not here tonight. Thank you. Alrighty. So, that was that one. And now, we have... Does it go first to? John, thank you. They're supposed to give me clues, and they didn't.
Okay, well, I'm gonna throw another wrench in, in the plan here, President Matoye. If I can respectfully request that we move forward with the Patient Care Pathway. First, we're still waiting for some DLAC chairs to show up. We are hearing that they are en route.
Absolutely. Any, any concerns? Nope. No problems at all. That sounds like a great idea. So, that moves us to Mrs. Franco.
Good evening, President Matoye, members of the Board, Cabinet, and guests. I am here to present you with another video. You recall, a few Board meetings ago, we saw a feature video regarding Estancia, excuse me, early college high school. So, now, we're going to take a look at the Estancia Medical Pathway, and I'm going to, for those of you that may not know, learn how to find it on our website. Okay, this worked last time. Magic.
Oh, this is wonderful, because now this is also a lesson in how to find it. Thank you.
So, on our homepage, Stay Connected, there's a link to our YouTube channel.
Through the last 50.
That's a voice I'd like to forget. Okay, so there's public information videos right in the middle, and then the Board meeting videos on the right, and we're going to go to public information videos. And over here on the right side is where you can scroll and see all the professional quality videos that the Public Information Office has done throughout the past few years. And if we scroll, we can see the NMUSD Patient Care Pathway video, and here we go.
The Patient Care Medical Pathway was launched by Newport Mesa Unified School District. The intention of the program is to prepare students for health-related industries.
The Patient Care Pathway that we have here at the Newport Mesa School District is the Estancia Medical Academy. This class started approximately nine years ago. During that time, career technical education was really big. I feel it's very important to maintain my, my skills as an EMT, as a paramedic, because then I can keep the students up to date on current knowledge, current cases. Things in, in the medical field are always constantly changing, and by me currently working in industry, I can bring that change to them.
Not only is he teaching us stuff from the book itself in our PowerPoint book, he's also giving us real-life situations that he's been a part of. His experience in the medical field just makes it that much better, because we can ask him questions on it, and he has answers, and he can explain further upon it. This is something I can do to help people out. Medical field is just such an honorable group to be among.
Between Coastline ROP and NMUSD have blessed me with this lab, space that we've had here. Kids will actually take this equipment, and they will see it when they move on into their next step of, of their chosen field. We teach them the basics of integrity, leadership skills. You really see the smile on their face, the passion in their face.
My sister initially sparked my interest into joining the Estancia Medical Academy. I remember her coming home every day and talking about all the different types of skills that they learned while in class. Through this program, I learned how to be more confident in the way that I perform things, and also how to work together as a team.
Me being an EMT, I get to ride in the ambulance, I can attend or drive, we respond to emergencies. When I was in- to emergencies. When I was in high school, I always knew that I wanted a career in public services. That being said, I heard about the program, Estancia Medical Academy, and it just sparked an interest. And I took EMR classes with Ms. Yuki. I ended up going on a ride-along with Ms. Yuki, and that solidified my decision with wanting to do what I do now, becoming EMT. Being able to take those classes in high school prepared me for the EMT course, and it gave me a solid foundation.
I find Mr. Yuki one of the finest instructors that we have in our school district. His dedication is boundless, he's passionate about this industry and his students. We could not do this without his dedication. The students are focused on moving to something related to the health-related industries, and that is something that really is wonderful for the district.
So, Mr. Holc couldn't be here this evening, but he did want me to thank the board for all of the support that you've given Estancia, and specifically this pathway. And he says to keep on supporting Estancia every opportunity you get. Thank you.
That's great.
Thank you. Sure. In order to buy some more time, we're going to start our informal reports. Dr. Navarro.
Thank you. And I hope I'm not stealing any of Mr. Holcomb's information that he wants to share. But, you know, I took the, I had a lunch with the facility staff this week. They have a huge summer ahead. You know, I've told you, they're working on projects that are valued up to $85 million this summer, and all of the AC projects, the work at Ensign, the work at CDM, the pool, and just to name a few of them. And really, it was just to, you know, kind of tell them how much we appreciate their hard work, and how well they've managed under Tim's leadership to keep all of these things on track. All of these projects getting approved, not, you know, coming right, and right at the right time. So when summer kicks off, which was this week, you know, they're hitting the ground running, and they're in high gear. One of the things they said, and I don't know if they shared this with Tim, but I thought it was a really, I thought it's showing that how they're growing as a team, and how they're expanding their capacity. We have a lot of Eagle projects in our district, and often we run across those Eagle projects after they're done, and maybe they're not really done up to code, and that's not good for us. So they're actually thinking of going out to the community, out to the schools, say, "Hey, when you get an Eagle project, start with us. Start with us, and we're gonna have a process for approving any of these Eagle projects, and working with the school, and working with the scouts," so that we can help them make sure that it's done according to all the state standards, and that they don't have any hurdles coming, getting in their way. The hurdles always come in when they start working on something, and we have to say, "Oh, that's not up to code." And they, you know, obviously, the kids say, "Oh, but it was all approved by my scout master." Yes. But, you know, we have a different standard. And so I just want to let you know that they're looking at differently, and I'm really proud of the work that Tim's done with them, for them to start opening, and not just being focused on making sure that everything's plumbed, but that, you know, maybe this communication can actually, they can create a better service for our students and for our schools. So I was really pleased with that. Yeah, I want to follow up on Mrs. Derudy's comments about all of the opportunities we give our kids. On your agenda tonight is a contract for the children's theater, the East Bluff Children's Theater. And we're in the process of becoming the provider of that. But this year, we could only do it if we had a partner. And so we are partnering with the East Bluff Children's Theater. And what, where it's gonna happen this year is our students won't have to pay to be in this. So here's another opportunity. We have a lot of programs in Costa Mesa in the summer, but we have very few in Newport Beach. So this is a really nice opportunity. And next year, I hope we can take it over a little more fully. And eventually, our dream is that we'll have, be able to offer this theater program to all our students across the district, because it is very successful. And I know that in speaking with Annie Lint, who's the, who's started the Estancia, the East Bluff Theaters, that she also has that vision. She would like to do two programs, one in Costa Mesa and one in Newport Beach. But, you know, our task is to use our resources to make sure these are open and free opportunities for our kids, no matter where they live. And so, I'm really proud of that. And then the last thing is, it's great to see what we've done for the medical academy at Estancia. And yes, they were up and going, but I have to tell you, since you opened up the College and Career Office five, six years ago, he's benefited. We've been able to put more resources and more equipment into his classroom. His new classroom is incredible. I think Russell's gone over there, and I think Tim's been over there, and some of several of the assistant hoops who've, yeah, who've seen the really incredible mannequins they use for to teach kids.
Real life.
Yeah, the real life. But that's because of the decision you made several years back to open up the College and Career Office. And we didn't have much, we didn't have really a lot of CTE or any pathways back then. And now, we're gonna have a CTE pathway in every school, and we have more completers of the pathways this year than we've ever had. So, good investments all along the way, good investment in the kids with the summer program, and a great investment in letting Tim lead his team through the, and bring a different lens to how we do facilities in the district.
Well, good evening. I thought I would follow up tonight from my comments last, at our last board meeting regarding management recruitments, and just give a quick update. Many people are already aware, and we will be bringing our new administrators forward either in July or August, depending on their vacation calendars that they're trying to fit in. But Carol Furman was selected as the principal at Harborview, and Dr. Jennifer Hagert was selected as the principal at Wilson. And so we still have several management positions open. We do have our Costa Mesa Middle School Principal position that we are starting interviews this week, and then we'll conclude a little bit later in July. We have a principal at Whittier position that's posted currently, that we will be seeking the ideal person for that community. And that, those interviews will take place the second and third week of July. And then following that, we have several assistant principal positions open, elementary level, high school level, and then also at Back Bay. So we will be looking to fill those. The ultimate goal is to have everybody in place by the end of July, so that August, everything is just smooth. We'll see how that goes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Firstly, I'd like to thank Dr. Navarro for taking the facilities team out for lunch on Monday. It really, that department is putting together, the amount of work that he described for you is a big, big task. It takes months and months and months, in fact, even years of preparation, to be ready for, as they say, "go" time, which just happened this last week. And that's one thing that I think a lot of folks can miss, can miss because they don't see all of that planning ahead of time. And again, I appreciate Dr. Navarro, after all of these months, to give that boost again that says, "Okay, but now we know all the planning is hitting the road." And because, honestly, they've all been working hard, and in fact, one of them just had their baby, Mark Manstoff, just had his first child. Actually, his wife had some complications, so the baby came a little bit early. So of course, that threw a little wrinkle into everybody's plans as well. But what I want to really mention tonight is the other types of wrinkles, such as the charter school. So, you know, we planned air conditioning last year, we planned the sports complex at CDM, as we've been working on for some time. And then all of a sudden, in the middle of all of that, we ended up with the impact of having to find a location, and relocate staff, and reach an agreement in a matter of months. And that's not an easy thing to do. And kudos to Mr. Lee Sung for his work in leading this process. But that team also stepped right up and said, "We will do what we need to do to make this transition work," even though it's kind of crazy trying to make all of this work in such a short period of time. But in this last week, with the assistance of the staff and Ms. Jockum's department, who have been impacted because they've needed to relocate, everybody has really pulled together to get a lot of things done in a very short period of time. And so you would know or see that staff that were previously housed at the Harper campus, some of them have now been relocated and are in their new places at the Lindbergh campus. That then allowed staff within the Harper campus to move to other space on the Harper campus, so that we can now do the work we need to do, both in their spaces, to make them appropriate for the special services that are provided, as well as to prepare the portion of the Harper campus that the charter will be occupying for them to arrive this fall. It really is a kind of crazy system in the state to, in February, first be talking about trying to house a school, and all of a sudden be ready for them to start in August. But because of the hard work of all of the district staff who've been impacted, it looks like we're in very good shape. And I'm pleased that it's going well so far. Expect to have a good report for you later.
Thank you. Oh, can you plan, sorry. One of the highlights of my summer last summer was the...
Bus tour?
Bus tour. So, that was so much fun. We got a bus tour of all the things that happened over the summer, when there weren't children on campus yet, so we could all just see all the good stuff. So, if you could put that on your backburner to maybe do that again, that was fun.
Understood.
Thank you.
We'll get on Mr. Holcomb's magic bus.
That's it. Magic school bus.
Well, I'll drive the bus, so he can finish the project.
There you go. That works.
It'd be good to take a moment. Mr. Holcomb talked about the moves from Harper. To acknowledge your warehouse staff, they have been absolutely stellar in moving all that stuff, and there is a lot of stuff to move. So, if you ever see them, give them a thumbs up for all the effort that they put in there, on top of what they're already, you know, they're already tasked doing their everyday job, their day job, so to speak. So, they've done a wonderful job. And then, just briefly, the governor, or the legislature sent the governor their budget a couple days before June 15th. So I was expecting he was gonna sign that today. Haven't heard that he signed it yet. It looks favorable from the outside, but as soon as we can get under the hood and take a look there, we'll report back to you on the details of that.
I can understand a automobile metaphor.
So, the Human Relations Task Force had a meeting on Wednesday, June 12th, and at that meeting, the task force continued brainstorming in their four subcommittees, and began prioritizing their recommendations to the board for what we're calling Phase One. Those are the initial recommendations the Orange County Human Relations Council will bring to you at our July 16th meeting. At our July 10th meeting, I just met with the Orange County Human Relations yesterday, and we're looking at those recommendations that we'll kind of make to the task force that they will go over in that meeting on July 10th. Wordsmith, maybe Tweak, that we'll bring to you on the 16th. Phase Two, I don't know if you know, but we had juniors and seniors from Newport Harbor High School go to the Simon Wiesenthal Museum of Tolerance a couple weeks ago. The last two days, we've had staff from Coronelmar High School, Newport Harbor, and Ensign being trained at the Simon Wiesenthal, their first two days of summer. Voluntarily, they trained to go on this training, and Sean Bolton sent back that it was an amazing training. People were crying. It was very emotional. It was a great training. At the end of July, Coronelmar High School, Costa Mesa, and Newport Harbor High School will be getting peer tutorial training for their student leaders, ASB, athletics, their club leaders. You'll notice Estancia High School is not in that mix. It's because Estancia already had their link crew training planned during those times, so they're doing, they already had something else planned. Those three high schools will also, their staff will be trained in anti-bias and becoming an ally on August 26th and 29th. So those, the staff, the principals, the students, the teachers, will be reporting back on those trainings to the task force, and that will kind of be Phase Two. We'll be looking at the things that they're doing, and deciding what should we move forward with, to have recommendations for you for next year. So it just gives us a little more and more time to dive deeper and to find out what's really working, what's meeting our requirements for recommendations for next year. Our third community workshop will be tomorrow night. I know it's summer. We're hoping some people will show up. We're partnering with the City of Costa Mesa. It'll be at their community room from 6:00 to 8:00.
City of Newport Beach?
Newport Beach, yes. And it'll be on Religious Tolerance. So that'll be our community workshop for this month.
So, when we think about learning theory, we know that learning occurs as people actually interact together around ideas and thoughts, and share their ideas and thoughts, and that's how learning really is constructed. And it's not just the accumulation when we think of teaching, it's not just the accumulation of new content knowledge and so forth, but it's really focusing on new kinds of ways of educating, and doing that through a process of not only reflecting on own practice, but also really being intentional about listening to the way students are taking up new ideas, and constructing meaning out of what we're putting in front of them. And so, when we think about that, and how we approach improving teaching and learning, I'm really excited about the opportunities we've taken, and our teachers are taking, in really focusing their efforts in mathematics, specifically in elementary, around cognitively guided instruction, which really is based in that collaborative learning environment, and learning from the thinking that is in the room, and providing kids opportunities to share ideas and thoughts around that. We will be starting our second-year cohorts. This is their first year, but it'll be the second year of the CGI's in place. And between both first year and second year, we'll have over 150 teachers participating in CGI, which is six full days of intensive training, and then after-school work as well. This will allow us also to really embed training within the workday for teachers, you know, coming from a common understanding of, you know, really building on every student's ideas in the classroom. It allows us to take our Orange County Department of Ed partners, who have been working with us over the last three years, and push them into classrooms with groups of teachers to collectively participate and learn through lessons and delivery of lesson around student thinking. It's really exciting to think that that many of our teachers are taking that opportunity. On top of that, we've got now, with our second year of a new cohort of fellows, we'll have 50 teachers who, along with CGI, are intentionally for five days also this next school year, some, most of it after school, doing deep dives into that content knowledge of standards, the intention of standards, and those progressions. And then that is also working into, you know, some job-embedded work that our partners at OCDE will be doing with them. There are pockets of transformation in classrooms, but I anticipate over the next two, year or two, that we're gonna see a whole new level of learning taking place in our elementary, in our elementary math classrooms. On top of that, middle school is following elementary lead for maybe the first time in educational history, in that we will have about 15 middle school teachers participating as fellows starting this summer. Again, doing deep dives into standards, looking at those, the intentions of those standards, also working in a lab setting this summer, taking advantage of some need for support for some of our middle school students. In a summer school session, 12 teachers will be participating in lesson development and delivery with reflection after all of that through the summer. And then they'll work after school, I believe, for two hours after school for 12 different sessions next year as well. So it's really exciting going into, you know, kind of this new way of really approaching learning in classrooms, and our teachers are taking full advantage of it.
Before you let go, with that many elementary school and middle school people, do we have every school represented with at least one person, so that there's an expert at every site?
Well, I will have to double-check for you. I'm not 100% sure, but I would be surprised if not. I want to be very careful in calling anybody experts, and putting any sort of expectation on them to lead, only because we know, especially with CGI, for those theories and ideas to really take hold, it's about a three-year process. So really, our focus not only is on student learning, but teacher learning, you know, through this process. So, to say, you know, that we have experts at every site, we will. That's the intent, but it is going to take some time of just really focusing on that teacher learning.
The very least, resources.
Absolutely.
That's what I was...
The other thing that is happening here that I meant to mention, is we do have several principals participating, right by the... several principals participating, um, right by the sides of teachers through the CGI, six-day CGI training so that they can also support, um, at their sites.
That is, that's really good. Thank you so much.
I'd like to, uh, share, uh, a few safety-related items. Uh, first of all, uh, there was a request, uh, from at least one board member of an interest to participate in the School Preparedness Academy sessions that we've started. Uh, we did two very successfully this year where we had representatives from all school sites as well as district offices. Uh, we booked, um, Brenda Emmerich from Costa Mesa Fire Department for another five sessions. Two of them will be held this summer for our management team, so that we'll, uh, complete that this August. Uh, we have a session in October and I just wanna let all board members know that if you are interested in participating side-by-side with some of our district employees and, and management folks, I will reserve spots for you on October 14th.
October 14th.
Get ready for a full day of hands-on, uh, preparedness training. And then we will continue on with two more sessions, uh, that will be again offered to, uh, representatives from school sites and, uh, district offices. Okay? So keep that date in mind. Uh, the other thing I'm excited, uh, to have on this agenda are, uh, four items for your consideration and I wanted to highlight them here while we have some audience members because one item is in consent and three of them are in discussion, on the tail end of discussion action. Uh, but I do wanna, uh, point those out right now. Uh, we do have our renewal for our second year of Raptor, which is our, uh, standardized visitor management system. So this is year two for that. Uh, and then we have, uh, based on some requests from some board members regarding adding AEDs at our elementary sites. So that is in discussion action where we're gonna be adding 24 AEDs and that will include all of our elementary sites and then we also included Harper and Lindbergh, uh, into that mix. Uh, the other item is the maintenance contract related to those AEDs. Um, and then the last one, um, is, uh, a company called Safe Kids Incorporated. Uh, it was interesting that several board members actually have shared with me, hey, have you seen this? Dr. Navarro reached out to me. I discovered it and, uh, we're very happy to say that we have interest, uh, to start a pilot program this year. And, uh, depending on its success and how it's received, not only by our staff and principal, but also our parents and students, uh, we potentially could expand this district-wide. So, uh, the gentleman who, um, developed this curriculum will be here later on, uh, but we do have that under discussion action, that's Safe Kids. And the, and the, um, the, uh, curriculum is actually called HERO, which is a curriculum to teach our youngest, uh, students how to incorporate the run, hide, act part in case there is an intruder on campus. So, uh, we think it's an incredible thing. I'll talk a little bit more about it at the, uh, agenda item, but I wanted to highlight that now.
Thank you.
Hi. Good evening, Board. Um, it seems like just yesterday, because it was, that I put my graduation robe away for the season and, uh, this week we start extended school year. So, um, there isn't a lot of downtime. Uh, extended school year is for our special education students and it runs, uh, June 27th through July 25th. And we are at, uh, Killy Brook, Teewinkle, and then we are at our STEP program. Um, if any of you would like to come out and see those programs, and they're primarily in the morning, but, um, I'm, I'm really proud of the work that they've done over the years of having it be, um, kind of academic-based instead of day camp-based. So I think they've done a lot of work in, in doing that. And we have our special ed coordinators who are the onsite administrators, uh, during that time and they, they enjoy that role. It's a little bit of a shift for them, so they really enjoy that. And, um, one of the things that, you know, we are always then trying to get all of the related service personnel, the aides to support the classrooms and the teachers. So, uh, a huge thank you to the Human Relations, uh, Human Resources Department, uh, for all of their work in helping us get the staff, um, on board and in a timely manner so that we can make class assignments and do all of that good stuff. So it went really well.
Thank you. Mr. Drake, I believe we're ready.
We are ready and what I'd like to do is ask Laura Del Pash, our, um, coordinator of EL programs, to come on up and, uh, help us with the, uh, the D-LAC report.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Navarro, President Montoya, and Board of Trustees and Cabinet. It is the highlight of, uh, my month when I get to attend our D-LAC meetings and to also have worked with our ELACs, um, at our school sites. So tonight we have a presentation from our, um, we were supposed to have both our chair, chair people, but we have one here, Martin Garay, and he is going to present the D-LAC border, board report.
Okay?
And you all have copies?
We do.
Okay. And he's going to speak in Spanish, so, um, Javier's gonna translate for us.
Okay.
Okay?
Cool. We should have headphones. I don't even get it. Underneath here.
Buenas tardes, la mesa de la, de la directiva de board. Doctor Navarro, Superintendent de, del distrito.
Good evening, members of the board. Um, Dr. Navarro, Superintendent of the School District.
Gracias por invitarme, por estar. Es la primera vez que estoy aquí. Gracias.
It's my first time here. Thanks for inviting me. Thank you.
Voy a dar un reporte de todo, este-
So I will be giving a report on everything.
Son unos puntos muy importantes que tocamos en nuestras juntas. A mí me gusta venir a la, a las juntas, a las juntas porque ahí tengo mucha información y compartimos muy muchas cosas.
So it's very, uh, important, all the topics that we cover in our D-LAC meetings. I like coming to these meetings because we learn a lot.
Okay. Ahora voy a mencionar unos puntos muy importantes.
So I will be mentioning a few, uh, important, uh, topics.
Los miembros de la junta directiva de D-LAC desean de destacar, desean destacar la presentación de nutrición porque les gustó mucho esa presentación.
So the members of the D-LAC board wished to highlight the nutrition presentation because they liked it very much.
También tenemos mucha información compartida relacionada con la tecnología fue muy importante y-
So we also learned very important informa- information about technology?
Tenemos, tuvimos la presentación de centro de salud mental que el JOC brindó y para, para los adultos.
So we also had a presentation from, uh, Melinda Hoag's Center for Healthy Living.
Fue muy beneficioso para los padres porque buscan recursos de salud mental y recursos educativos.
So it was very beneficial for many parents who were looking for mental health resources and educational resources.
Los padres valoran las sesiones prácticas como demostraciones de titan, el uso de Chromebooks para acceder a los recursos del sitio web.
So parents value the hands-on sessions such as Titan demonstrations and using Chromebooks for access, uh, to website resources.
También los padres demuestran mucho interés en comprender y contribuir a las conversaciones y compartir sus experiencias en las juntas de D-LAC.
So parents are always very, um, excited about sharing their opinions and participating in these D-LAC meetings?
Los padres tienen un excelente trabajo de los coordinadores y los personal del departamento de proyectos especiales.
So parents think that, uh, they have excellent coordinators and staff, uh, from the Special Projects Department.
Algunas otras recomendaciones que los padres desean que sean reconocidos. Ellos desean como algo, oh, gracias porque estás aquí contribuyendo.
So, uh, one of the recommendations that they did suggest, uh, was to receive recognition or some type of celebration for the work that they're doing.
Yeah, porque son voluntarios o porque asisten a las juntas.
So they participate as volunteers? They, uh, attend the meetings?
Yo creo que eso les va como a motivar más para que los padres vengan más y, y así hagan más preguntas.
So that recognition will motivate them more to participate and, um, contribute more?
También, uh, okay, invitar a lo, a la presidenta de D-LAC cada escuela, a las escu- invitar al presidente de E-LAC cada escuela en vez de cada año para colaborar y participar en las reuniones de D-LAC.
So inviting, uh, the E-LAC president of each school site once a year in order to collaborate and participate in the D-LAC meetings.
Algunas recomendaciones que los padres, eh, sugieren deberíamos invitar a los directores de las escuelas y reunir a, a, con E-LAC para hacerles muchas preguntas.
So one of the suggestions was to invite, uh, principals from schools, uh, to the D-LAC meetings so that we can ask questions.
Me gustaría añadir algo.
So I would like to add just one more thing.
O, un, me gustaría el, el entrenamiento de los maestros que reciben, que todos los maestros reciban el mismo entrenamiento para que se beneficien los, nuestros hijos y así reciban todos y estén como bien entrenados.
So the last suggestion that we have, uh, from D-LAC is that all teachers should receive the same type of training, uh, so that it can benefit our children and that they all receive the same education.
Tengo otras recomendaciones.
So we do have a few more recommendations?
En la junta de D-LAC, eh, pedí, hay un periodo de, nos gustaría agregar periodo de, de discusión de diez minutos.
So during our D-LAC meetings, we would like to add maybe a period of 10 minutes for discussion?
Y la junta directiva necesita más tiempo para celebrar, para celebrar y discutir más temas más importantes.
So the D-LAC needs more time, uh, together to collaborate and talk about more important topics?
También explorar el, el sistema de traducción de ATLAS.
So also to explore the, uh, simultaneous interpretation program or ATLAS?
Aumentar la cantidad de fa- de, de facilitadores, la, la comunidad escolar, S-C-F, una facil- una facilitadora de la comunidad escolar por el sitio escolar para el apoyo diario.
So also to add, um, the quantity of the, the amount of, uh, school community facilitators that we have. Uh, so the suggestion is one facilitator per school, uh, that's, uh, one S-C-F per school, uh, to provide, uh, more support during the day.
Y también invitar a los estudiantes reclasificados y a sus familias a reconocerles en las, en, a reconocerles en las reuniones de D-LAC y pues así sería como, oh, ese están haciendo muy bien.
So we would also like to invite, um, reclassified students, um, and their families so that we can recognize them during our meetings, uh, at D-LAC and so that our parents see, uh, the, the success of these students.
Okay. Ya casi termino.
I'm almost done.
Sí. Ya termino.
Sí.
Oh. Creo que ese es todo.
I think that's it.
Es, es la primera vez. Muchas gracias, Boar. Thank you very much.
So it's my first time. Thank you very much.
Very good. Está muy bien.
That was terrific.
Can I ask a quick?
Um, yeah, I just wanted to add, if I can just add, um, to thank, um, Mr. Garay and then also Javier, um, translates at all of our meetings, our interprets, so we appreciate his help. And Jaclyn Gaton is our district school community facilitator who is at every D-LAC and helps prepare our materials and communicates with parents and so we couldn't run our D-LAC with, without them. So we thank them. And then we also want to thank all of our, um, officers on our D-LAC, um, and all of the parents who attend that represent all of our schools. And then I also want to say a special thank you to, um, Trustee Black and Trustee Anderson for attending, uh, many of our meetings. So we appreciate your support.
Fun meeting. So I mean, they do have good discussion.
Yes. So thank you. So sorry, question?
No. My question was, is the ATLAS program, the program that they use at Costa Mesa High School?
Yes. They're currently using it at Costa Mesa in Estancia, so we'd like to explore that a little more, um, expanding it.
Cool. Thank you.
Muchas gracias, Martine.
Está muy bien. La reporta está el, lengua perfecta. Thank you. It's just long enough? Did I say that right? Or did I just say in the wrong tongue?
Yeah.
Yes, bueno, lo sabe muy bien.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Such an important program. Community input on action items, do we have? Okay, we do not have any for our consent calendar.
Okay.
So we can zip straight over to the consent calendar. Other than item 16D1? Which has been pulled. Do we, um, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Okay, Mrs. Bartow moved. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Yelsey seconded. Do we have any questions or discussion? All right, a hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Five ayes, two absent. Resolution consent calendar. This one is, because it's a cons- resolution consent calendar, it's one vote for all the resolutions. That being said, I just lost them on my page. Thank you. The resolutions are, Resolution 260619 is to approve the local agreement CSP-9353 for child development services with the California Department of Education for our state preschool program. Resolution 270619 is to approve the local agreement CPKS-9058 for child development services with the California Department of Education for pre-K and family literacy. And this is a roll call vote, but we need, we still need, do we now, yes, we still need a motion and a second.
I will make a motion for this.
Excellent. Do we have a second?
Second.
It was moved by Ms. Anderson, seconded by Mrs. Bartow. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Roll call.
Oh, it's a roll call, so it doesn't matter how many we have. Mrs. Snyder, roll call vote.
Ms. Montoya.
Yes.
Ms. Flores absent. Ms. Black?
Yes.
Ms. Yelsey?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bartow?
Yes.
And Ms. Snell is absent.
So for those counting, it's five. Thank you very much. Alrighty. Now, number 17A, which is a standalone.
18A.
18A?
Oh, sorry, 18. There they were. There they are. I could have read them. Thank you, Dr. Navarro. 18, discussion, discussion action calendar. Approve the CELPA annual service delivery plan and bless you. CELPA annual budget plan for the 2019-2020 school year. Dr. Jocum?
Uh, as we discussed at the public hearing, uh, at the last board meeting, this is a requirement, uh, for either a multi-district CELPA or a single-district CELPA, which we are, uh, to indicate to the California Department of Education, um, kind of how we plan to spend our money and also what services on a snapshot are given at each of our school sites. Um, and because, um, our district provides, uh, many times over the amount of funding we get out of the general fund, um, it, it's, uh, it's never been an issue turning in our annual service and budget plans.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Mrs. Black moved. Mrs. Yelsey seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I have to say, great report.
Yes.
Really great report.
Five ayes, noes. No nos. Any nos? No nos. Two absent. It was a great report. It's, we do good stuff. Mrs. Gailey? Time to adopt the Local Control and Accountability Plan affectionately known as the LCAP.
And another great report.
Oh, my God. Good evening. Uh, Dr. Navarro, uh, Mrs. Montoya, members of the board. Um, I like to say that I don't have two children, but three. The third is the LCAP. The first are Brayden and Autumn. I spent a lot of time with my third child, um, starting in about January. Um, so, uh, we're presenting to you three things tonight, uh, the LCAP and then the LCAP Federal Addendum and then the Parent Budget Overview, which are required to be submitted as separate items, even though they're kind of meant to be a package. Um, and so the Parent Budget Overview is included in our LCAP, but we also included our Narrative Budget Overview, just to explain the circumstances a little bit more. So they're all three separate items.
So, they're all three separate items. So, the first item is... Was presented, all of the items were presented last week, and so, the first is approval of the LCAP.
Do we have a motion?
So, move. Sorry.
Second?
Second.
It was moved by Mrs. Black, seconded by Mrs. Yelsey. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Absent, two. Five ayes. Alrighty. I heard voices. Okay, approve the LCAP Federal Addendum. A motion?
Move approval for the addendum.
Thank you. Just trying to change it up a little.
I know, I'm trying.
And a second. I know, and a second.
A second.
Thank you. Was moved by Mrs. Yelsey, seconded by Mrs. Bartow. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And two absent. So, it's five, zero, two. Approve the Local Control and Accountability Plan Budget Overview for Parents. Do we have?
Move approval for the budget overview for parents?
Second?
Second.
Was moved by Mrs. Yelsey, seconded by Mrs. Black. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Absent. So, it's five, zero, two. You did it! Yay!
That was so easy. That was so easy.
Yes, that was so easy. And I can't wait to start all over again.
You should hear Hallelujah singing in the background.
Yep, I have spreadsheets with tabs. We're ready to go. So, thank you.
Thank you for the hours and hours and thank your children.
But it is really a phenomenal report and the fact that it's from all the departments, district-wide, our schools, everybody has their hand in it. I mean, I know you were slapping their hands trying to get them to get it to you, but it's remarkable. You know, it really is very remarkable.
Before Vanessa leaves, can we give her a nice little applause for the great work she did on the FEM?
And Jeff, too. Jeff, too. We're partners.
And now that I know, no comment is like the best thing ever on the federal thing. I learned that.
Yes.
Well, it wasn't like there weren't a lot of questions beforehand.
Oh, yeah.
But we had no deans either.
Oh, the federal program monitoring review, yes. We're very, very proud of the outcome of that. I think, as we mentioned before, we were reviewed in five areas, although for a while it was six, but the team at the state, they were short-staffed. So, at the very end, they pulled back on education equity, even though we never did. And so, we had all five areas, we had over 70 areas that were reviewed within the five major topics, and we had one finding out of all of the possible things, which is very unusual for a district our size, so.
And the finding was? I'm sorry, I know you repeated it.
We have one teacher who is not missing... Is missing one piece of the full credentialing for English learners. So, one.
One.
Yeah, and we're rectifying that.
That's it. See, that's it. It's something we can fix.
Oh, great.
Thank you, thank you.
Congratulations. That's awesome.
Yay. Mr. Trader, it's your turn.
So, possibly out of Vanessa's easy bake oven, you have the budget in front of you for adoption, and it is really an expression of your priorities and numbers, and so, we recommend approval.
You recommend purple?
Approval.
Oh, approval. Well, they were purple this year, so my mind worthed that. And this one is a roll call vote after we have a motion and a second.
Move approval of the funds budget 2000...
Nineteen twenty.
Second?
Second.
It was moved by Mrs. Yelsey, seconded by Mrs. Black. Roll call vote, Mrs. Snyder?
Ms. Matoye?
Yes.
Ms. Flores absent. Ms. Black?
Yes.
Ms. Yelsey?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bartow?
Yes.
And Ms. Snell is absent.
So, it's a five, oh, two. Yay. We can spend the money! Oh, sorry, okay. Yes. Alrighty.
Can I add just a quick reminder that I had that question on Fund 17 for the general fund, the transfer?
And the question is?
Oh, so it was from the last meeting. There was a million dollars that was transferred from the general fund to Fund 17, the Special Reserve Fund.
And she asked why?
Asked for last time.
Oh.
You can look it up. I just wanted to know. Just a reminder.
Yes, I'll get that to you. I thought I covered that, but maybe I didn't.
Well, it wasn't in the memo that we sent last year?
Must not have been in the memo. So, I'll cover that with you. So, your question is about a transfer from Fund Seven... Or from the general fund to Fund 17?
Yes.
I'll get that on.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oops, sorry. You even had your light on and everything and I didn't see it. Okay, item 18F, first reading and adoption of modifications to board policy. And this one is on tech... The budget committee looked at all the policies that we've been getting, and sometimes when we're doing an entire section, there's nothing different in the section except we're changing our verbiage from governing board to Board of Education for easier understanding for the general public to know that the Board of Education is the governing board. So, we did that, or we just changed a date because we looked at the whole section, so we just changed the date. So, for that, we were looking to hopefully adopt them in a slew because they were just that little, unless somebody had questions on anything. Then, the other ones were a little more substantive, so we would discuss those separately. That was our intent.
And so, when you say ours, for the public's benefit?
Yes. The Budget Editing Committee. The Budget Editing Committee consists of Mrs. Snell, Mrs. Flor and myself because we were the most nitpicky people on the board at the time and would find things and we would extend our board meeting for a very, very long time while we discussed the differences between shall, may, will, or whether there were commas that belonged in certain places. So, rather than take the public's time and all the people that come to our board meetings, we met ahead of time with the three of us and just chewed up the policies so that by the time they went to the rest of the board, that little tiny stuff happened. And the board itself reviews everything for substance and clarity, so if they found something we didn't in the course of the usually two weeks that we have the policies before we vote on them, they can be... Questions can be asked and our hopefully meeting won't be so long. That being said, Mr. Trader.
So, you're suggesting that we could do the concept and roles, the thirty... Three thousand, thirty-two, seventy, thirty-three hundred and thirty-three fourteen, and then thirty-three, fourteen point two and one?
All coming under eighteenF.
All coming under eighteenF.
Okay, well, I think that...
That is a suggestion.
Public needs to know what they are, so.
Yes. Well, I was just letting us know what...
Okay.
What that was, and then I could let Mr. Trader take over because that's supposed to be your turn. Go ahead.
Okay, so with that, then, we have the following five policies contain very minor technical changes with no substant...
Changes.
I can't say that tonight.
Substantive.
Thank you, changes.
You're welcome.
So, if there are no questions, we request a motion to waive the second reading and adopt the suggested revisions at first reading as a group. So, that would be...
So, move.
All these policies here, three thousand, thirty-two, seventy, thirty-three hundred, thirty-three fourteen and thirty-three, fourteen dot two.
Second.
It was moved and seconded. Do we have any discussions or questions?
Just a request for those watching, we read the... Like, what the policies are. So, three thousand is concept and roles. Just can we read those out?
Certainly. I will, Mr. Trader.
Okay.
Board policy three thousand is concepts and roles, which basically means that it's the whole concept of the budget, that we recognize that the instructional program has a business department that has to pay for stuff. Thirty-two seventy, sale and disposable... Disposal of books, equipment and supplies. When something becomes obsolete, there's patterns that we have to follow according to the state, so we do that. Thirty-three hundred is expenditures and purchases, and it is... Basically says that we have a fiduciary responsibility to do what's right for the children and to spend the money in the way that's right for children, not just willy-nilly. Payment... Board policy thirty-three fourteen, payment for goods and services, that we should develop a system for internal control to make sure that the right stuff goes to the right... That the money goes to the right things and that we pay our bills on time to keep our credit good. And board policy thirty-three, fourteen point two, revolving funds. There's a really small amount of revolving funds that exist, and it's for things like buying stamps at a school site or... Actually, ninety-nine percent of it seems to go for postage, and that's what I always used it for, and half of it went back every year. So, basically, it's the... How the revolving funds work in all the departments. So, that's what those are. So, we have a motion from Mrs. Black, a seconded from Mrs. Yelsey. Did that explain it? Yeah, clearly enough. Okay, thank you.
That was good.
Oh, well, I read them over and over nineteen times and edited every comma. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, there's five ayes, two absent, and the two absent were on the committee in the first place, so I don't feel bad about this at all. Alrighty, eighteenG, Mr. Trader.
So, the following six policies contain more revisions and as a result... It's as a result of changes in law, regulations that were court decisions. So, if there are no questions, we request a motion to waive the second reading and adopt the suggested revisions at first reading as a group, or we may take them at one at a time. So, if we were to look at board policy thirty-one hundred, budget, are there any questions or comments?
Are we okay? Just give me some eye contact or shake your head so we're... Okay. Thank you. So, you're good with thirty-one hundred, which is the budget, which basically says the board recognizes it's our job to hire somebody really good like you that will put forth a really good budget.
And it's even more than that. The board is responsible.
We are.
Responsible, responsible.
Responsible.
No one else is.
Even if you do the budget, we're responsible for the budget.
So, it's...
Okay.
It's an important policy.
I should let you explain. You can explain these big ones now.
The next one is board policy thirty-one ten, transfer of funds. And so, this just outlines the rules of engagement on transferring of funds, which means that we... You actually approve the budget and all of those transfers that happen, and we're very... We try to, at least on... When we have interim reports, we will tell you exactly what moved and where it moved to. Board policy thirty-two, twenty dot one, lottery funds.
Before you go to that one?
Yes.
The transfer of funds policy, when I... We all read it, it blacked out a whole bunch of stuff, but what it basically did was say that now that we have the Local Control Accountability Plan, that everything that that said is contained in that, so please see the Local Control Accountability Plan.
Well, that's why my light was on because I was wondering when that changed, you know, so... Because I, too, thought there was a lot of changes, so that makes total sense to use that. I mean, because that is line by line, everything that goes on in our district, so appreciate that.
The next one is lottery funds. That's thirty-two, twenty dot one, and there are lottery... There are some restrictions on that. Some of those lottery dollars can only be spent on materials, instructional materials.
Some of them.
Some of it.
Okay.
And these... This is just some cleanup for some changes in law. The next one is fees and charges, and this is pretty important in regarding to... We must provide a free and appropriate education, and so, we're careful. There is not anything that we charge that is not specified in law, and so, we just can't make up our fees and our charges on our own. Any fee or charge that we have must be allowed by law. And so, this is just some cleanup language here to provide just that concept that we offer free education, and if we do charge, it is only... It's a charge that is allowed by law. And then, the next one is bids, and this is... We have to operate by public contract code, and so, for any things... Things that we procure that are above the... How do you say? The bid amount, which is about ninety thousand dollars now, that we need to publicly bid that. And that's a great... That is really a good best practice. We bid things out, we get the best prices and hopefully the best service and the best quality that we can get. And so, having policies here that indicate that we're going to follow public contract code is really important to getting the best that we can for the district at the lowest possible price.
Oh, Mrs. Black?
You know, and I like the fact that they had the conflict of interest, and I think they worded it really well this time around. Before, it was a little convoluted, so I think that was good because it really... The public wonders, you know, a lot whether we have somebody in our pocket or a friend or... And we also unfortunately get our neighbors and friends and even family that call us and say, can I use your name to get my foot in the door? And so, I really appreciate this on here, so, you know, I can refer them to our board policy, and usually, we refer them to you, so, which is helpful, but...
It's good. Takes a lot of pressure off of everybody.
Well, the public that, you know, we have real strict guidelines and, you know, and it protects them as well as the, you know, the public funds, and these are, you know, our public's funds. So, I think it's important that people know, and a lot of people, you know, it's not something that's on their radar all the time. But they'll be really enthusiastic about a product or a service or something, and they just know we have to have it, and we would love to hear about it, but we have to go through the proper process.
And your point's really well taken about public funds because that's a whole different threshold.
Right.
Of accountability.
I'm very well aware of that.
Oh, yes.
And so, it's a... I'm glad you made that point.
No, I'm glad, too. Thank you for that.
All right, and then, the next one, of course, is contracts, and this is just spelling out the rules about how we can... How you can contract with different entities and the responsibilities about who can acquire things, who's responsible for that, and then also has some things about... There are some rules about contracting for non-nutritious foods.
Oh, my gosh.
Very specific rules about that.
But thirty minutes after school's out?
Yes.
They can eat whatever they want, you know, but they just can't... While school's in, they cannot eat anything but that's prescribed and approved by the federal government.
Right. But thirty minutes after school is out, then the boosters can sell whatever they want to sell for the football game.
And then, there's some new things about contracting for digital storage and maintenance of student records, and that's all related to digital privacy.
And that's part of the new laws, too, California, families, children, families.
Protection Act.
Protection Act, yeah.
Thank you.
A lot of what comes across our table when we get policy is changes in the law.
Right.
And that triggers us having to rewrite our policy, and we don't even necessarily have realized that Law 45B affects Board Policy 60, but someone else is really good at letting us know.
And that's one of the reasons I appreciate CSBA, you know, having that service, because they're on top of the law changes. So we can see when the law changed and click right on it and see how.
It's very helpful.
Very helpful, yeah. Well, it's, you know, and they're great at explaining it, too, so.
Alrighty. At this time, Mr. Trader asked if we would approve and waive second reading on the whole slew, or do you want to do it individually? And if we do, I need a motion for either one, please.
I'll move to approve Board Policies as presented in this group, in one reading.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mrs. Bartow seconded it. Any further discussion? Alrighty, we're moving Board Policies 3100 Budget, 3110 Transfer of Funds, 3220 point one Lottery Funds, 3260 Fees and Charges, 3311 Bids, 3312 Contracts. In one reading for approval, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Absent, so it's five, zero, two.
A lot of work, and thank you, everybody.
Thank you so much.
Good job, Policy Committee.
It was many hours.
We were very happy.
It was nice.
That you did that, that was great.
Well, I'd say anytime, but I'm sure Mrs. Snyder will then be giving me a notice. Oh, by the way, we have 14 more before next meeting. Alrighty, we now have Mr. Holcomb to discuss the external defibrillators.
Actually, yes, we put this on here, but, and we have Kent Ramsayer, who handles our AEDs here, but actually, this is an item that Mr. Lee Sung, as our Safety Chief, has been spearheading, so I'll pass it on to him.
I'm happy to be attached to AEDs in this district. But I do want to say that I'm pleased that we've really had a renewed effort on safety in our district over these past, what, 12, 14 months or so. And really appreciate the support of the Board and the collective efforts of many people in our organization, including our union leaders, several who are sitting right here tonight, that have been really involved with collectively looking at how we can continue to improve safety in our district. And, you know, of all the things that we do, this is just one more thing that I believe is a great thing, not only for our students potentially, but for our staff and any visitor that comes to our campuses. And I know I've had conversations with several of you on this item. Trustee Bartow specifically came to me and asked, hey, can we do this? Is this something? And absolutely, this was on our list, and happy to bring this forth. And I do want to give kudos to Kent Ramsayer, who's back there this evening. And he has been the one, very quietly behind the scenes for many years, coordinating and making sure our current existing AEDs are properly maintained and inspected through a vendor who comes and does this. And it's one of those things that you never see happen, but it gets done, and they're certified according to the regulations. So Kent Ramsayer does that for us. And so when we had an interest to expand AEDs, he went out and did the research to find solid companies and the best price. And so we're real happy to bring this for you for consideration for 24 additional AEDs, which would be installed over the summer at our 22 elementary schools, as well as Harper and Lindbergh. And then 18I, is that right? 18I, that comes right after, is the maintenance contract that would maintain not only our existing AEDs, but also these additional 24. So just very pleased that we can do this and have this, and hopefully we never have to use it, but if we do, this is something that can save a person's life.
Perfect. We'll start with 18H. Do we have a motion to add 22 defibrillators to the elementary schools, perhaps?
Make a motion to approve 18H, Resolution 18H?
Yes, thank you. And Mrs. Bartow, do I have a second? I know, I know.
You have to put your mic near your.
Just get it ready, just get it ready. We've got more coming, that's good. But wait, there's more. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? As a principal of, a former principal of an elementary school teacher, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Two absent, all five, five, zero, two. 18I, approve the service agreement with AED for quarterly inspections of all the AEDs, wherever they are on our campuses, which I'm sure Mr. Ramsayer knows exactly where they are.
So moved.
Mrs. Black moved?
I'll second.
Mrs. Bartow seconded?
Did you already try to do? Sorry.
It's not a contest.
That's okay. Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And two absent. Thank you. And this one goes back to Mr. Lee Sung.
Okay. So 18J is a new agreement, and I'm very excited about this one. This is with a company called Safe Kids Incorporated, and I'm very pleased that in our audience today, we actually have the President of Safe Kids, Adam Cogren, and the Vice President, Scott Coleman, and Director Jason Coleman. They are part of a fabulous team that we have gotten to know over the last couple of months. And we, with the approval of the Board and the beginning of a pilot program, we would invite them to come in and do a full report in the fall. But let me tell you a little bit about this company and why we are very excited about offering this pilot. As we started training and doing the Run, Hide, Fight, or the Run, Hide, Act training for our students, which unfortunately is a necessity in today's world, some of the feedback that we got from principals, from teachers, from parents, is that this is a pretty heavy-duty topic to be talking with our youngest students. And so principals and SROs, you know, try to deliver the training and assure that they understand the concepts of what to do, but it's very difficult to teach that type of concept. So they might, instead of talking about somebody with a weapon on campus, they might talk about a coyote on campus and try to teach the concepts, but in a different scenario. So we were struggling with how do we teach this? And I was pleased that this company had come along. In fact, some of our Board members heard about this company and thought, this is definitely something we should look into. When I read about it and started talking to the folks who developed this curriculum, that hit a gap, which I felt was really a need to be able to teach this curriculum to our kids. And even that went beyond my expectations, because really their curriculum is talking about empowerment. So not just a Run, Hide, Fight scenario, but really just empowerment skills. And so they have developed an age-appropriate curriculum that would be taught at our elementary schools under this pilot. And we have three elementary schools, after listening to a presentation, have fully committed to implement this for the full year into the next school year. And that is, and I will share that with you, it is Paularino, Kaiser, and Lincoln. And with positive feedback from the site, this is something we would consider to do at all of our elementary schools. But, oh, and one other piece I want to mention, another area that principals had talked about their concern is how do we communicate this with parents? Because many parents are very concerned about this topic, even being brought up at all. So what I saw with this company is an amazing set of resources that would be shared and communicated and educating parents. So this goes hands in hands with school and what's going on at the home. So just overall, this is something we're very excited to pilot, and with your approval, we will begin this in the fall. When we get to the point where we start to communicate this to our parent communities, I would love to have these gentlemen come back and do a full report for the Board where we can formally announce this out to our community. So I hope I did well. You gentlemen, I appreciate you're here. If there's anything you want to add or any questions, we can do it at this time before consideration.
I have a question for, I don't know if it's for you, Mr. Lee Sung, or for Dr. Navarro, but how come we can't do four pilots and include Estancia? I just feel like that's, you know, that we at least have one elementary school from, is it?
Oh, you mean a school from the Estancia zone?
We don't have one in the Estancia zone now, and this to me, so they're leaving that zone out.
Well, we were looking, I believe we were looking for volunteers.
Yeah, so the format that I use is I did invite all the principals to attend. We had principals from the Ray Zone who were there, who were actually very excited about this as well. The challenge is, particularly in this first year, as you know, with anything new, there's going to be some kinks to be worked out. And some of our schools in Ray, they have a lot of initiatives going on, and I respect the fact that they said, you know what, I'd love to do this, but not this first year. They shouldn't be on the cutting edge, but certainly if this starts to develop the momentum, which I believe it will, we can, we can get them all on board. But that was, I was actually hoping for two minimum, and I got three, so I was pleased. But not to exclude any school in any particular zone, but that's kind of how.
Well, I just want to make sure that they don't have a huge catch-up then, you know, but I totally understand the reasoning.
Mrs. Yelsey?
So as you, as the year progresses with these three schools and you evaluate how it's going, is the intention to roll this out in all our schools, or just if they volunteer to use it, or?
No, if we have a successful pilot, my belief is that we need to then make it available and required at all of our schools. The beauty of this is that these are standardized practices that we want to be able to do district-wide, because that becomes common language procedures throughout our district.
Speaking of language, is it bilingual? Good answers. Just for the public, the answer was yes. Ms. Anderson?
Is this program also available for junior high and high school? I noticed these are all elementary. Do we have something different that we're doing for secondary?
Correct. So they have written a curriculum at the middle school level, as well as the high school level. Our interest at this point is to focus on the elementary schools, because that's where the concern came with kind of the training and the anxiety that's at that level. I did not hear that concern and need at the middle school or the high school level. So we're going to start here. Certainly, if we build momentum and there is an interest to move to middle school, we can absolutely consider it. But, and I know our folks with Safe Schools would love to expand that and make it district-wide.
It's also a little easier to bring up the subject with older kids without terrifying them so much. So I totally appreciate that you have worked hard to do concerned without terrifying. It's a tough thing. Thank you, thank you. Any further questions? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the agreement with Safe Kids to pilot HERO in 2019-20 school year.
Is there a second?
Second.
Yes. It's moved by Mrs. Yelsey, seconded by Ms. Anderson. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Five, zero, two absent.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you for developing this. It's, I'm sorry that we need you. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah. Back in the day. Mrs. Olson, will you talk to us about declaring the need for fully qualified?
Absolutely. Tonight, we bring forward to you the annual declaration of need for fully qualified educators. This is an annual declaration that we do in order to allow us to hire employees, teachers, who may be missing something of a requirement. So where we find this is in shortage areas. Often, if we are hiring folks from out of state, they will have something that California does not require. For example, the English Language Learner Authorization is not required in most states. And so when we have people come to us, then we need to have them work with an emergency permit as they're working to get the authorization. So they do not, we do not use this, and then they not work towards getting it. It's just a temporary permit, and then we monitor it. In fact, when we sign someone who does not have a particular authorization, we actually sit down with them and say, how is this going to work? Let's, what is the plan? And then we do some check-ins with them, because we don't want to get to the end of the year and find that they have not done the steps that they need to. This is the way that we avoid long-term emergency permit after emergency permit with the same employee. The limited assignment permits, those that you see are definitely in shortage areas. We do leave ourselves a little bit of wiggle room, for example, with multiple subjects, because if we don't put enough number, a number there, we actually have to bring it back to you before the county would allow us to, would they, they would authorize this permit, which would then delay hiring. So we give ourselves a little bit of a cushion in the area, and this is how we work with the county, and hopefully we're not utilizing too many, and hopefully we don't have to bring it back for more.
Do we frequently put in, this is our best estimate of what possibly could happen, but we don't end up with these numbers at all? We end up with much less than that?
Yes, and in many, like the, for example, the English Language Learner Authorization, we won't come near to that, given the folks who apply. But we do give ourselves just in case, because we don't want to have to delay it later on.
Could be the best teacher ever from North Dakota that moved here, and we don't want to not give them a chance.
And the B clad, I will add, so, or the bilingual authorization. So staying on the clad, English Language, English Learner Authorization is embedded in the California credential currently, the English Learner Authorization. The bilingual authorization may be embedded, depending on what the person's major is, but there are people who have a subject area, and they want to go back and get the bilingual authorization. So that one can vary a little bit.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
So move. I'd like to do two more seconds.
You know, when Mrs. Snell and Mrs. Black aren't here, I mean, Mrs. Snell and Mrs. Florsh, they just jump on this so fast, and the rest of us just are used to waiting for them. So Mrs. Black moved, Mrs. Yelsey seconded. Do we have any further discussion?
I just have one question. It lists colleges and universities which participate in internship program, and I noticed that there are more that I would think that we use. Is this just for the current calendar year? Is this a non-exhaustive list?
These are the ones that we have MOUs with, so that should we choose somebody with it, that is on an, within an intern program, we can access it for the same reasons, so that we're not delaying a hiring. We also only use internships when we're in a hard-to-fill area.
Okay.
So we want to have as many listed as possible.
That's what, yeah, I was like, we can add more. Okay, thank you.
Good question, thank you. Any other questions? Alrighty, it's been moved by Mrs. Black, seconded by Mrs. Yelsey. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Two absent, thank you. And then, we didn't move any of those. Community input on non-agenda items. We have three.
Do I need to read?
Yes, you do.
This is an opportunity for the public to address non-agenda topics within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Board. Per Board Policy 9323, each individual speaker will have three minutes. Speakers may not cede unused minutes to other speakers, and there is a maximum of 20 minutes of comments per topic. With Board consent, the President may increase or decrease the time allowed for public comments, depending on the topic and the number of persons wishing to speak. In compliance with Board Policy and the Ralph M. Brown Act, the Board is not permitted to take action or discuss non-agenda items. When addressing the Board, it is helpful if you state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. Dr. Doughty? And thank you again for speaking on behalf of the Eagle Scouts.
You are welcome.
That was great.
So I'm Brett Doughty. I'm President of NMFT 1794. Good evening, Mrs. Matoye, members of the Board, Dr. Navarro, members of the public and the community. Don't let my clothing misrepresent the organization which I'm representing here.
You could have run out and changed clothes and come back, but that's okay, we did.
I'm looking to speak to you regarding some employee safety, and specifically how this ties into the Board Policy Priority C and building relationships with the employee organizations. Recently, we lost a member, and this has caused a lot of reflection for us within our organization. And we've also had educators suffer from stress or anxiety, and this caused them to miss work, which therefore then impacts students. And so when educators bring concerns, whether it's related to a physical safety issue or stress on the job, they follow protocols, and they report these incidents to their supervisor or their principal. If required, they contact our office and ask for NMFT's help, and we in then turn talk with the appropriate district administrator to try to seek action. And the challenge is always getting these concerns resolved in a timely manner. Often, these employees don't feel like their concerns are fixed in a timely manner, or their stress becomes reduced. And so some specific examples in recent years where we've had some issues might include developing district-wide heat contingency plans, or sewer gases at Estancia, or the rodent issues at Newport Harbor. Recently this year, there have been some safety concerns from student behaviors that have stressed out kindergarten and first grade teachers at many schools. We've had individuals who've had stress related to conflict with their coworkers. Sometimes that's a result of leadership at that school site. Sometimes it's related to they just have personal stresses themselves. And in each of these situations, NMFT tries to resolve these issues at the lowest possible level. But often, it seems that the only way that these issues get resolved is by taking extreme action, whether those members have to file grievances, whether they have to come and speak to you, whether it turns into something more public, and that is a source of frustration. So improvements are being made with physical safety. Mr. Lee Sung has spoken to that tonight. We acknowledge that. But we do still have gaps with regards to decreasing stress and anxiety of our members. And so we are looking for ways to try to deal with concerns in a timely manner, to help people have. help people have better mental health, holistically within themselves and on the job. And we're hoping to develop better conduits to resolve concerns in a more timely manner. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes. Ms. Olson, would you mind sharing how we address some of these issues and what our protocols are?
Well, I'm not completely clear of the specifics that Dr. Doughty was referring to and possibly, that wouldn't be appropriate anyway. I can tell you that we do have weekly, as much as we can, there have been times when we have to postpone or cancel weekly meetings with the NMFT leadership. Dr. Doughty and Nicholas Dix, their Executive Director, of which concerns are often addressed from both sides. And sometimes, we can move forward. Other times, we have to find further information, hear both sides of the story and move in that direction. This year, we also set up regular meetings. That included Mr. Holcomb and Dr. Jokum for those specific areas. For example, areas of student behavior or students who have special needs and how do our teachers work through that. So, I think when we look at problem solving, it's an ongoing process that we always go through. And sometimes, we don't agree. And that sometimes is seen as not resolving something. Other times, it takes, there is a deep-rooted problem that we have to work through collectively together and try to improve the relations of everyone. But, I think that we have made some really significant improvement in some of the things that we have been doing. I think that the things you don't hear about are some of the problem-solving situations that we have had. So, I think it's always in our interest to problem-solve at the lowest level. We certainly need specifics. Sometimes, we don't get all the specifics or we don't get both sides. And so, we just continue to try to improve the situation for everyone involved. In terms of mental health and health wellness, it has been part of our joint benefits team. We do have lots of conversations around wellness. And that includes what can we offer in terms of workshops and whatnot for our employees? Stress is an interesting thing. As we all know, it comes from many different facets in our lives. Work is one of them. Home is another. And there is a multitude of other reasons why we have stress. So, we're trying to offer more and more of those workshops for our employees. We also want to let our employees know that we have a service available, our Employee Assistance Plan, which is no cost to our employees. They can access it either online or by a 1-800 number. And there's a multitude of resources that are available to our employees. And it's anonymous. So, as a district, we don't find out who calls for what. We get a tally number of how many calls and the percentages that is accessed. And so, that is a really wonderful resource that quite frankly, is underutilized for our folks. The other thing, not just to stay with one organization, the Federation, but I do want to share, and I don't mind sharing that with CSCE, we've had a lot of rich discussions about conflict resolution, whether it's employee-employee, whether or not it's employee-supervisor, whether or not it be perhaps at home. And so, through our negotiations process this year, one of the areas that we really spent a lot of time on is what can we do to help people problem-solve and resolve conflict? So, I'm very happy to say, and we'll be bringing it forward, that in collaboration with CSCE, we created a pamphlet that's titled "Working Together," and it's conflict resolution. And I just can't wait to bring it to you. But, we thank them for their work on that. So, I think collectively together, we just continue to work on the conflicts that arise.
So, in summary, these are difficult problems. These are challenging problems. And the best way we can solve this is to work together, the association and the district, to make sure we're addressing the needs of our employees and our students. And as a result of that work, you and CSCE have come up with some solutions that are proactive and we just need to continue working together.
And I think we just need to make sure that the communication lines are open and that the right people are the ones who are doing the communicating. Sometimes, if it takes us too long to get to the person who might have some answers, then it's more difficult and takes longer.
We've had this kind of discussion in our workplace also, in the private sector. And so, because stress, it is stressful out there. There's a lot more, just getting to work in the morning. When I have to come to a meeting at 7:30 in the morning, I'm not happy by the time I get here because we have four schools that are all starting at the same time. And just to make a left turn, which I don't do anymore, I make a right turn. But, you know, I'm not saying I'm stressed, but I'm frustrated. So, I can't even imagine, poor souls, that I have to do it day in and day out and then fight the traffic after work, you know? So...
And they have difficult jobs.
And they have very difficult jobs, too. Yeah. We appreciate that.
Thank you very much for that explanation. Thank you, Dr. Doughty. Mr. Bell.
Thank you. I have a prepared statement, but I made copies for the Board because it's hard for me to just only speak for three minutes. I just drove three hours from Big Bear because this is important to me.
Thank you.
So, hopefully, I get through all of it. Recently, there has been a group of unhappy stakeholders who are asking for a change in NMUSD leadership. The Daily Pilot recently published opinion pieces criticizing Dr. Navarro. I cannot stand by and watch the unwarranted and unfair attacks on Dr. Navarro. We desperately needed Dr. Navarro seven years ago to right the ship and bring civility and pride back to NMUSD. I remember when the climate and culture within NMUSD was toxic. Morale was horrendous. I almost left the teaching profession due to a lack of hope and interest. Then, I heard Dr. Navarro was returning to NMUSD as Superintendent. My hope was restored and I was inspired. I remember being a new teacher during the 2002-2003 school year at Costa Mesa High School Middle School, when Dr. Navarro took the helm when the school was in program improvement. In three years, Dr. Navarro and his administrative team transformed the school to California Distinguished School Honorable Mention status. We missed California Distinguished School recognition by one-half of a point. This past weekend, I reviewed, and here are my spreadsheets, the 2017-2018 California School Accountability Report cards for all NMUSD schools and compared NMUSD results to other Orange County school districts. NMUSD exceeded state averages on California assessment and student performance and progress. I found 48% of NMUSD students are designated as socio-economically disadvantaged and 23% are English-language learners. Our overall demographics will never allow us to compete with the highest-scoring districts such as Irvine Unified, Laguna Beach, and Los Alaminos. As expected, there are significant differences in test scores when comparing our Newport Beach and Costa Mesa schools. You can't expect Ray Elementary to perform at the same level as Anderson Elementary. I can speak to available resources or lack of resources within NMUSD. I worked at Costa Mesa High School for 11 years and just completed my sixth year at Newport Harbor. There are so many variables that impact student achievement. I am adamant that the negative comments of a small group of stakeholders is opinion. We are doing great things. I welcome all members of our community to visit our classrooms, observe our difficulties and challenges, embrace our successes. We will always welcome productive and constructive ideas. If you think there is a solution, bring it to the table.
Thank you.
We have your letter and we appreciate that.
Yes. And you wrote really good things at the rest of it. Thank you very much. I liked the sentence that said, "If it's easy, you wouldn't need us." Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Navarro and President Matoya. For this meeting, I made a formal request to place on the agenda a discussion-action item to return community input on non-agenda items to the beginning of the Board meetings. The request was denied by Dr. Navarro, stating it was because the Board believes that late-night meetings deter public participation, can affect the Board's decision-making ability, and can be a burden to staff. Board policy is that meetings are to end at 10:30. My research shows that the average time that meetings ended since January of this year was 9:45. As far back as I can remember, the public could address non-agenda items at the beginning of the meeting. Tustin, Los Alaminos, Irvine, Placentia, Yorba Linda, Ocean View, Huntington Beach districts all have oral communication at the beginning of the meetings and some of them also have it at the end. Two-thirds of more of the public comments made at the beginning of this school year, two-thirds more were made than the last half of the year. Only one-third of the people spoke and four times, nobody spoke. Bylaws of the Board, your own bylaws, say. Bylaw one, that people are our most important resource and should be treated with respect and dignity. Waiting for three and a half hours is not respecting the community. Bus drivers behind me last week said that they got up at 4:00 and 5:00 in the morning. Two young speakers had to wait three and a half hours to speak. The LCAP was way over my head and I'm pretty knowledgeable about the LCAP. And I really appreciate all her work. It was great, but I couldn't follow it all. And you know what? It's still not on the web, so I couldn't even look it over since two weeks ago. The video. Bylaw number two, that the Board needs families as partners with the school and district in sharing ideas and giving input to major decisions affecting their children's education. One, you can expect your young family, you cannot expect young families to pay $50 or $60 on babysitting. You need to have a babysitter here for beanies. Waiting to speak at the end of the meeting is very nerve-wracking for many people, particularly second-language speakers. Parents need to put their children to bed. They need to monitor their homework. This is workable with the comments made at the beginning of the meeting. I think it's important for young people to attend these meetings. I loved the calendar-change meeting. There were a lot of speakers. I loved the math meeting. Those were great. Maybe having high schools need to attend meetings for three hours would be great for their community volunteer hours. And I want people to participate. But, do you want your kids to go out at 9:30 in the morning?
Thank you. Nope, I didn't let Mr. Bell, so thank you very much.
It's a good statement.
And I'm betting...
Please work on this for the beginning of the new year. Let's have a great year. Have the comments at the beginning.
Thank you, Mrs. O'Meara. Alrighty, we are at Board Member Reports. Let's start with Mrs. Black.
Okay. So, first of all, I want to celebrate all of our graduates, our 2019 graduates, all the teachers and support staff and our principals. It's pretty exciting, another well-oiled machine. Everybody was one minute, you know, 59 minutes and it was pretty amazing. But, the students and shaking their hands, and I believe I shook maybe 1,000 hands. What do you think? And no bruises or anything. A little black eye because, you know, he dropped his diploma case and I went down for it and he went down for it. But, I didn't notice it until the morning. I went, "I got a black eye." But, it was well worth it, you know? But, what was so amazing is a lot of the students are shaking, you know, to give you a Board perspective. Clammy, I mean, they've been out there standing in the sun and so, you're kind of wiping your hand so you don't think they... But, most of all, every, because I always say, you know, "All my best to you," and everyone said, "And same to you," and they hold my hand. And I'd have to say, more than 50% of them, you know, do that. The rest of them are really nervous and they're trying to get, "Where do I take my picture?"
Yeah, what do I do now?
"What do I do now?" But, congratulations. I'm so excited and a little jealous to all of them. They get to go out in the world and so, that was really good. And then, when we're all done with our reports, then I will continue and finish his letter that he gave us.
Read a letter to the district. Okay.
Is that okay?
When we're all done.
When we're all done. Yeah. Is that all right with everybody here? Okay, great. I'll read it.
Um, yes. It could be the norm, though, if other people...
Well, they didn't, nobody else gave me a letter. If you want to read her letter, if she had a letter, then you could read it.
Right. My question is, are we going to make that the norm?
No, I think coming down from Big Bear.
I think during your report, you can say whatever you want. Why don't you say it during your report?
I'm just asking the question. That's good. That's not a bad question.
Okay.
But...
Should I read it now?
This is her report.
This is your report. You can read it now.
Okay. Well, I'm going to start. As expected, there are significant differences in test scores when comparing our Newport Beach and Costa Mesa schools. You can't expect Ray Elementary to perform at the same level as Anderson Elementary. I can speak to available resources or lack of resources from Newport Mesa Unified School District. I worked at Costa Mesa High School for 11 years and just completed my sixth year at Newport Harbor. There are so many variables that impact student achievement. I am adamant that the negative comments of a small group of stakeholders is opinion. We are doing great things. I welcome all members of our community to visit our classrooms, observe our difficulties and challenges, embrace our successes. We will always welcome productive and constructive ideas. If you think there is a solution, bring it to the table. We are on the same team, wanting the best for our students and our community. I spent 15 years in pharmaceutical sales and management and now, over 17 years in education. I didn't know that. That's pretty cool. My professional experience have taught me the following. You will get more accomplished if you are not concerned with who gets the credit. If it is, if it is...
If it was, it was easy.
If it is, or if it was easy, okay, we have too many "is's" in there. They wouldn't need us. And if you are making everyone happy, you are doing something wrong. Thank you. I like that. I'm going to frame it and put it in my office.
Thank you. Mrs. Yelsey.
Yeah, just since our last meeting, we've had mostly awards, graduations, promotions. And I too, want to just thank everybody, congratulate all the kids, the administrators who work so hard to get them where they are. And something Dana touched on, but I noticed in these graduations, these high school kids who think they're very mature and ready to get out of here and they're ready to move on and they come up and they are so nervous and so, they have sweaty palms and they just, "Where do I go now?" And they're all afraid. And they're really still kids at heart and they were just really excited.
And we know they practiced.
So, it was fun to see and congratulations to everyone.
That's a good point. That was great.
That's it.
Am I allowed to ask the question now that it's my time?
Absolutely.
So, are we going to allow that as a regular? So, if I want to read a citizen letter, is that possible?
You know what? I am nothing if not fair. So, if someone handed me their speech and they didn't finish and in your Board report, you wanted to finish what they said, then I would have to be fair.
Okay. That's just my question. It wasn't the topic.
Nope, it wasn't. I know, but...
But, I've been doing it my whole career.
Do you have a core report? Yes, I do. I attended the Community Alliance and one of the things that I'm really excited about is the higher level of strategic partnership going into next fall. I really feel like the people that are on the table are coming up with some really great ideas.
Would you let everybody know what the Community Alliance is?
The Community Alliance is a partnership with all of the nonprofits, with Hope Hospital, a ton of people getting together quarterly that are under mental health, that do tutoring and after-school programs. It's really a network of huge support to our district. And so, to continue to expand out and communicate that to all of our parents, to know what the resources are, and then also for principals, too, to be able to see all of our partners. So, I just, I love that time. One of the things for me I didn't bring up during consent, but so, under 16D6, I just want to continue to make sure that the drug-sniffing-dog protocols that we have in place on our campuses, I would like to see continued efforts to make sure that we are not over-disciplining. One of the parts of the LCAP, actually, the federal addendum, is reducing the overuse of discipline practices that removes students from the classroom. I want to make sure that we are really using that. We need to have dogs on campuses. We're not creating a jail, a school-to-jail pipeline. So, I approved it, but I'm going to be monitoring it and it's something that I'm concerned about. I'm also really excited about the agreement that we... I'm also really excited about the agreement that we, that we approved for the pre-kindergarten family literacy program and early childhood. There's a lot of good work that's going on in the city right now around that, so I am very excited to see that happening more and more. And that is all.
Thank you, Mrs. Bartow.
There, thank you. There have been many graduations, and I was pleased to be able to speak at the Ensign Promotion. It was really fun to see a lot of my friends' kids, and actually, one of my daughter's friends took a video and sent, and texted it to me. So I was like, "Oh, that's nice, I got a video." We, I attended the Masters in Governance Training, which is on budget finance, so with Miss Anderson last Friday. And so I felt like it was good, and everyone said, "Pull out your budget if you're going through it right now," so I feel like I know just enough to be dangerous. And appreciate that. It's been really exciting to see all of the great things that the district has done, but I do have to express my frustration at this superintendent evaluation process. I think we're on a good track to like move forward and make some good changes. There's definitely a lot of onboarding as a new board member, so I'm excited to see that all work together. And to underscore the really great things that I've seen out of Newport-Mesa, there are some amazing, really well-prepared high school students, and the maturity level of everyone that I've interacted with just kind of blows me away. I think of myself at that age, and I don't, I don't think I would have come across that way giving a speech and being that articulate, so it was really good to see. And additionally, I'm really excited about the AEDs, and I never, if you asked my mom if I would have gotten the nickname of Suzie Safety, I think she would be shocked, but it's near and dear to what I think is really important, protecting our kids so that they can have a safe environment to learn. And that's it.
Thank you. And echoing the theme of graduations, it was especially fun for me this year because I was able to attend CDM's graduation, and while I live in Costa Mesa and represent the constituents of Costa Mesa High School, I worked as a principal over in the Corona del Mar zone, and some, and the fifth grade class, when I was last principal at Harborview, was the graduating class this year, and the first grade class at East Bluff. And I actually remembered some of the kids and was able to shake their hands and look them in the eye and say, "I remember you from kindergarten," and their eyes lit up. And it's, it's a, it's very exciting to have someone say, "Mrs. Batway, you came to my graduation." Which I want to compliment the principals of the high schools, who invite the elementary school principals to every graduation. And the kids are so excited, you should hear the cheers that go up from the crowd when they say, "And the principal at Sonora, Miss Anderson, is here for..." And so it's really exciting to see. And from my vantage point, I don't, didn't attend, I wasn't able to attend Estancia and Newport Harbor, but everyone in the Corona del Mar zone was there. It's also timing. The Costa Mesa High School was at 1:30, and the kids were still in school, so the principals were reluctant to leave school to come to graduation, but I get that, that was really fun. And for the public in general, we will occasionally have a missing board member for the next couple of meetings because we changed our typical calendar patterns, so therefore vacations this summer were a little bit wonky, so some of our board members are having way more fun, in my opinion, than we are right now, and will be at the next board meeting, and will be at the last board meeting. So once we're back in September, we're back along normal lines. Mrs. Bartow spoke about the evaluation process. It is definitely ready to be tightened up, and we are currently at the status of receiving Dr. Navarro's self-evaluation. And after perusing that, we get a Survey Monkey document to collab, uh, congeal, consolidate all of our own opinions, and then adopt, but then we have to have a meeting to discuss it together as a board, and I'm currently in the process of trying to find a day between now and August 20th. And I, we're, I'm into August because there was absolutely not a day when all seven board members are in town in the month of July. So the process is going to be dragged out longer than any of us would have liked, but it will be due to circumstances with attendance and fun stuff. So that's where we're at. And I think, I wanted to thank, we, the Costa Mesa Youth Sports Meeting will go on during the summer, so that does happen on July...
July 10.
No, it's the first week, is the fourth on the Wednesday?
That's with July 10.
No, the fourth is on the Thursday, so it should be, Italy would be the first or the 10th. But either way, we're going to have to, some sad news about the city voted to not spend the money on Costa Mesa this year, and so therefore, in Newport Beach, they, the city planners have planned wonderful fields, and there's many, more access to sport fields for the children. In Costa Mesa, we have a partnership with the city, and they access our playgrounds. And a few playgrounds were under massive, we had massive irrigation issues, and we were going to partner with that. We were partnering with the lights on Kaiser and Davis, and we had a grant program for all the high schools, and that's on hold this year. And thank you to the council, I believe it was Councilmember Marr, who put it back on the table for 2021, so we can discuss it next year. So hopefully that'll come back into place. All righty, that's, Mrs. Flor is not here to do the crop report.
Laura, you, in Ms. Flor's place, I can remind you of something.
Oh, yes, would you remind us of something, Dr. Navarro?
So, Ms. Flor is not here, but if she were here, she would remind you that at six, on 16E10, you approved a bridge agreement for crop. It's a one-year agreement as we work to identify and solidify the funding stream. As you know, after the, during the recession, the state pulled back, pulled back all its state funding for ROPs, and they are no longer a state agency. So they live basically off of the agreements they have with school districts. And so in light of that new, or of no-funding structure, we have to figure out a different way to operate our ROPs. And so we've agreed to a one-year agreement. All the districts are staying in for the year, and then as we figure out what the long-term agreement will be, we'll see how many of us remain in the partnership.
Okay, thank you for that. And did we have a meeting, didn't we have a meeting after the last D-LAC meeting? Or we had the D-LAC report, is there anything?
Yep, we had, the final meeting was rescheduled to June, to June 13th, it was just last Thursday, and it was a celebration of everyone coming together. I think one of the things that I would like to see with D-LAC, and I've heard from several of their leaders, and several were not here tonight, because part of their role is to advise, and a lot of what I'm seeing when I'm there is they're being told information, and they're not allowed to advise as much. They're given, "Here's what we're doing." They're not having an advisory role. And so that's something that I would like to see changed for next year.
Is it, are the recommendations, weren't those advice? I'm just asking.
Well, so that was the other, that's the other part of my question, is what is the process for implementing the recommendations? Because that, that was a recommendation from last year, and I didn't see a change in that at all. So what, my question is, what is the process for implementing the recommendations? Because I haven't seen that happen.
Well, D-LAC is its own state-authorized committee, and they have, and they operate like the board, they have open meeting laws, and staff will facilitate that discussion amongst the D-LAC leaders. It's not something we impose upon them, it's something they have to, they decide. So that will be something we move forward with and support them in moving in that direction, if that's the way they want to move.
But they themselves, because I attended, you know, most all the meetings last year, they themselves said that they were frustrated, and they wanted our help, solicit our help, our help to get more people there. And, and we brought daycare in there, and, and they themselves are, you know, a little frustrated, but, you know, to be honest with you, we have over 60 people for the most part, unless we're doing, you know, playoffs and things like that, or something, or open houses. But for the most part, you know, they're getting over 60 people, but they themselves are, you know, it's kind of the same leadership over and over again, and they would like to have, like, like, you know, Ashley's saying, and he was saying, he's frustrated, he wants to have more discussion. But we, we are saying the same thing as the school board members, we want more time, you know, and time is valuable. So I, you know, I think, you know, that would be good. And they started having, just so the public knows, they started having key, you know, keynote speakers on different items, and we, and they, the parents loved it when returning students from, you know, that, that had been, what is it, ARFET?
ARFET.
I always, and those students came back and spoke, and it was really powerful, really powerful to, you know, and their parents were there to validate them, and it was great, so.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Mrs. Galey, but one of the purposes of D-LAC is to receive information and to make sure that the D-LAC representatives bring the questions to the district. So I would assume that the questions that are brought with these recommendations, Mrs. Galey is quite aware of them, and will work with her team and our team and us to see what we can implement and what we can't. Because as a citizen, when I was on advisory committees, I had to remind myself that just because I thought it was a really good idea, and I advised them, it didn't mean that they were going to listen to me, or that that was something that could be done, or done the way I thought it should be. I often say that I wish I was queen of education, but I am merely a board member, so I don't have nearly the power that I thought I did.
But they're genuine in there.
But they need to feel like they're valid.
The current president, what shared with me, her entire role was to take attendance. She was not, she was not allowed to be in advisory capacity. She was not here tonight. We didn't hear from her. So for me, that was indicative of the fact that she doesn't feel like she has a voice as part of this process. So that's something that I would like to see changed dramatically for next year.
And I think, what you have, we are, what I'm trying to explain is that we can't dictate. We can bring these recommendations to the board, the deal elected, and they will decide what they want to do, and staff will support whatever their decisions are.
That's great. We just have to be, maybe we, we need to hand-carry them here, you know, so they get more comfortable coming.
Well, and having both you and Mrs. Black at the meetings is, is a change to have, in addition to a very appreciative board member, two very active board members who hear their requests and can work through the process at the meetings and see how that can happen. Because I agree, it's very frustrating to feel if you don't have a purpose. Oh, good, you heard my plea. Thank you.
So I think a couple things, just to comment. So advisory could be defined in many ways. So there have been several opportunities for our D-LAC to provide input in an advisory way. Through the LCAP process, we had two different sessions. Our first session, they also provide advice into, or advisory role into our English Learner Program Needs Assessment that goes out to every school site, and we made sure that was in alignment. So some of those things are part of the requirements, and so they did provide advice into that needs assessment that goes out to all of our campuses. They provide that advisory role, they self-select all of the topics that we have. So none of those are imposed, those are all from their privy. So, and most of the meetings, we've had an opportunity for them to also provide survey, they provide surveys and feedback, and then we take those in, try to implement those into subsequent meetings. We did hear that, so the report you saw today as well was based on our ELAC, D-LAC officers that met as a committee and provided all of that input. So the, our president came today to present, but that was a compilation of all of their thoughts, so they all had an opportunity to provide that. One of the pieces of feedback we did receive was that they want more time as officers as a group, and so that's something we can absolutely provide for them, and so that they can expand their advisory role with the group and the role they take in our meetings. So we, we definitely want to do that as much as possible. But like you shared, it's a time commitment, so then they're going to commit to coming often.
But they're there early. I mean, they come a half an hour early, but they all speak, you know, and visit with each other. And I'm not saying that's a bad thing, that's actually what we want them to do. But, but one of the things we did to change PTA when we were in a lull years ago is we had, we advertised PTA, and maybe no one else will remember, but we, we had state of the school, you know, right at the very beginning from our principal, and we always had a guest teacher afterwards. And everybody would come, so we have to find that topic or that person that, you know, that they want to hear or listen to. And after two or three meetings, it worked, you know, we just had standing room only. Now, people left when we got into PTA business, you know, the nuts and bolts of committees and things like that. Not everybody stayed, but more and more people did stay because they were learning, you know, they were feeling as part of the community. So it's just a more, I mean, it's just, we just have to be, you know, aware and ask them, would, you know, let's try a couple things on it to see if they give, and then give them that time. Because really, time is very valuable.
Yeah, we received some great feedback from the officer group for some strategies and ideas that we can come back as an officer group in the beginning of the year and try to take to the meetings and really help the parents to implement that during the meetings. Because that's our ultimate goal, is that the parents are able to do that and provide those advisory capacities within the meetings, so they're not inflicted by us as staff, but they're coming from them.
And that, we don't want to be the ones dictating.
Yeah.
But I also heard from Mrs. Anderson and also in the report, that there are concrete recommendations that, that the group is, is giving to us. And so, since your department is so, this is your ball of wax, I would like to know, what can we do to either implement them, explain why we can't implement them, explain a timeline that it could possibly be spread out over a few years? I've served on too many committees where I felt that I was there because the organization needed to have a committee formed in order to run or qualify for something. And if we're going to have people come out and have 60 people, I don't seem to think it's a problem having not enough people, but, but I hear the committee saying, when they said, "Please invite the principals," or "Please invite the ELAC presidents," I think that we may not have all the right people, and I, I don't see, uh-huh, my fellow principals, former fellow principals will shoot me, but I don't see have saying, "Okay, why doesn't this zone send," or two, high elementary principals that are part of D-LAC, give yourself a rotation and attend a D-LAC meeting.
Well, Dr. Navarro came, Dr. DiAgostino came, we had Nutrition Dale.
But the principals of the schools are different, too.
Well, we also had Mrs. Scott come, too, I think, and speak. So I, you know, but you're right.
But I'm just saying. That's, that's what I heard. It wasn't that we needed a bigger group, but we need to feel like we are a valid group, and if all we are is to check a box off, that isn't it. And I know that's not it, because I know that they are representatives to hear the information that we know is, like the LCAP, that is a challenge to understand, and we're explaining it in terms that laypeople can understand it. So your job now as a D-LAC rep is to take it back to your ELACs and let the ELACs, and so they are a conduit for information.
They did a pretty good job, I thought.
That's my number one concern. So D-LAC is held in English. 98% of the people in that room are Spanish speakers. It is insane to me that that meeting is conducted in English. The two people, and I understand a ton of Spanish, the two people in the room that aren't speaking a different language were the ones that should have a headset.
I did in the first part of the year, so when...
I did that at a Costa Mesa ELAC meeting, I wore the headset.
Yes.
So that was feedback we received as well, and I think part of that is being, there are multiple languages, so, but we will adjust that so that our parents with other languages are, are honored as well. I just wanted to comment on responding to the recommendations. So we'll go through theirs as a staff. Many of them are very easy to do. They're, one that I don't think was shared was, they would like an update on the Human Relations Task Force. So that's easy, I can work with Dr. Barameister, we can add a report. So many of those are very easy to do. And then some that will take, you know, for instance, they're asking for an SCF for every school site. That would be much more involved in terms of staffing and resources. But I do think it's important that once we explore that, we come back to that group and share with them why that may not be possible, or why it is possible, or what we can continue to do.
Try it until it's laid out, it's not possible.
Yeah. Many of the recommendations were about the officer group, so we definitely want to bring that group back together, and there'll be new officers in the fall, so that's part of the challenge, it'll be a different group. But bring back those recommendations and say, "Here's the three or four that were recommended, and now how can we move forward with implementing?" So, for instance, this group asks to meet monthly, and so we'll want, we'll need to make a commitment if they want to continue to meet monthly, to advise on the larger meeting. So many of those are easy to implement right away, but many of them, we will come back in the, in the fall and see if that group wants to continue with those, those ideas. Yeah.
But I think Laura's right. Yeah, I remember as a site principal, you know, I wanted my teachers to be involved... Yeah, I remember as a site principal, you know, I wanted my teachers to be involved in decision-making and have a say in the direction we're going, but that required them to spend time with me. And this is, and time is what we, what has to be devoted. So if our officers want to have more impact on their direction, which is what they should have, they should be able to set the direction that they're going, they're, we're going to have to invest more time with them, and they're going to have to invest more time with us to plan the meetings.
And I'm willing, and I know Ashley is willing, I mean, if we can't both be there, we can commit to, you know, do a sidebar, but it is a public meeting, so if, you know, I don't think we necessarily need more meetings, but we probably need to make them a little longer.
But I think these are probably...
The recommendation was that the officer group...
That's right.
...has those additional meetings to help plan and advise on the meeting.
No, I hear you, I hear you. So I didn't know if we could do it earlier and have their meeting then, or, you know, but afterwards, they're pretty much socializing, so I don't think anything's going to happen. Or maybe do another meeting, you know, I mean, we could take, you know, turns going to.
Yeah.
My concern is the time was donated and offered, and that was not what happened. And so what I would like to see is the recommendations that were made last year, those to be brought and compiled with these, and have a discussion about, "Okay, these are the three that we were able to implement. Here are the five we're working on. Here's a timeline and having more communication about that," because the time has been given, and that hasn't, that hasn't happened, so, thank you.
Thank you.
So the only other piece to add was Dr. Navarro's point that there are some requirements legally with D-LAC. And to be honest, some of them are quite dated requirements that are not too exciting. And so we do try to take the requirement and add to that and really make it meaningful for parents. So I'll give you an example, one is to share the language census. That's really a dated, it was back in the day when they helped us make the census and to count English learners in a D-LAC meeting. So that's very dated, but it's still a requirement. So rather than do that, for example, we shared with parents how to access data on the website to empower them. So we're trying to make it a little more meaningful, but some of those are required topics that we do need to cover. So we're trying to engage them in that, but many of them are requirements. So much of our time does have to be spent on those requirements as well, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you for being here. That was very enlightening.
Okay. Motion to adjourn? No.
Yes, I don't have any legislation because legislation has been not, there hasn't been much happening. We're still waiting for the revises and different things to come down.
Same old, same old.
Thank you. Would you add legislation to the required meeting so that I remember to say that? Thank you, Mrs. Bartow, I forgot. That being said, Mrs. Black moved to adjourn. Any question, anybody that wants to stay longer? Okay, all those, we are adjourned.
Drive.